Session from February 26, 2020. At 10:00 AM in the Attorney's courtroom in the County Attorney's Building 207. First item on the agenda is the indication of pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, Commissioner Perry will leave this.
Please bow with me. Lord, thank you for this day and the many blessings you bestow upon us. We appreciate the opportunity to do meaningful work on behalf of the citizens of Brazos Valley and Brazos County. Please look out for our first responders and the men and women who serve our country. It's because of their service that we enjoy the freedoms that we have. Thank you for this rain, we certainly needed it, and we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored by Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we'll go to number three, its presentation and discussion, a tour of the Brazos County website by Blake Enlund.
Okay, just give me a second to get him. All right, we should. Blake, I think we're ready when you are.
All right, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes, sir.
All right, can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Okay, so I'll jump right into it. So our primary goal for the new website was to make it easier for the public to navigate and find the information they're looking for. So I think the navigation is a good place to start. Up top here, we have the public announcement bar. This is being used to link to current COVID-19 information at the moment, but it will be updated for other various public announcements in the future as needed. Below that, we have a few links here. Courts, jobs, health department, and phone and email directory. And these are placed here conveniently because these happen to be some of the most frequently accessed pages by the public, based on our analytics. And below that, we have our primary navigation. So we have our government categories, our department categories, and so on. So if you need to drill down and find some of these other pages. Below that, we have our search bar and our quicklink section, county announcements and quick resources. I think this is probably going to be the most useful section for the public because you won't have to sift through other pages and sub-pages to get the information you need. For example, the agendas, you could go to the agendas here and see the agenda for today's meeting, for example. Or same thing here, court dockets. You immediately get the information that you're looking for instead of up here where you kind of have to drill down a little bit further. So I think that's probably going to be the most utilized section here. And below that, we have county news, which is typically updated and posted by the Public Communications Department. So that's where you're going to look for recent updates from the communications from the county. And below this is our county events. So county-wide events, they're going to be posted here, and there's also a calendar here. I believe that's also posted by the Communications Department, but I'm not sure. Below that here, we have our, this is where we're going to go if you want to connect to our social media channels. Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, et cetera. And I think the last thing here that I want to go over is the site map. The site map is a list of all of our pages and sub-pages. So if for whatever reason you're unable to find what you're looking for through all of the other navigational methods, this is going to show everything that's available, every page that's available on the county website. And I think that's about it.
Blake, that's a great improvement over what we had. Thank you. Let me ask one thing. The tax collector had a separate site that you could go in and pay your property taxes on. It was very convenient. I guess it is attached, if you scroll down just a little bit to the tax payments maybe, and see whether it's in there. That's what I would hope. If it's a little, I think that's going to be it.
Yeah.
I believe that's the one that actually was where he went to pay the taxes. It was a little more difficult to get there before, but I like it. This is a great improvement.
Intuitive, yeah. Very intuitive.
Thank you, thank you. And also, as we collect more analytics and we get more feedback from the county employees and the public, we can kind of shift around this section a little bit to make more frequently accessed pages more prominent here and make it even more convenient for the public.
Okay. You ought to consider doing this for a living, Blake.
I like that it's user-friendly.
Yeah. Good job.
Yeah, I like the fact that it is portable, mobile devices friendly on a comparative basis. That was probably the biggest situation where it was, you could navigate the webpage from a computer one way, but then you were forced to have to navigate in a totally separate way. So I appreciate the fact that it's now user-friendly, you're looking at the same thing on a mobile device as you are on a regular. There's a create an account, sign in as far as that goes. What would be the thing that somebody would be, and the public would be most interested in creating an account for? Would it be, and y'all find as far as creating accounts? Is that for the court dockets and for most of our attorneys? But what do you see, what's your experience as far as the people who have signed up and created an account?
This is a feature that previously wasn't really utilized much, but there's subscription options to get alerts or emergency alerts and a few of the event announcements and things like that. So the user would get an email whenever one of our county employees posted an update in one of those places.
Okay, super. So a citizen that was interested and they could click off different types of items of interest that they would receive notifications for on their email address that they chose?
Yeah, exactly.
Super, thank you. I think that would be great for much more interaction for people to be able to follow things. Do we, okay, the health department listing to this, when we go to health department, that pretty much puts us over to, we go off, it talks about to go to this link to the website for the health department, but it's a direct link off of our page?
Can you say it one more time?
Well, there's a health department listing, and I noticed that, I mean, probably right now, there's a whole lot of people who are interested in following health data and statistics for the Brazos County Health District. And I noticed that there's a good presence there on the menu bar where it says Courts, Jobs, Health Department, Phone, Mail, Phone and Email Directory. And on the, when you go to the health department and you hit this link, you go to the Brazos Health District's website as far as that goes. So I like that. Are they in the process of looking at redoing their website as far as that goes, or do you know anything about that?
We've recently updated it, I believe at the beginning of this year, maybe January, February, somewhere around there.
Yes, sir.
Before the pandemic. We haven't done too many updates since then, but we kind of update as we go.
Super. Well, thank you much. I appreciate that. And I was looking at, on a mobile device, their website is much more friendly than it used to be, too.
Okay.
Judge, I have one question.
Okay.
No disrespect meant at all, but I wondered, could we not have a more governmental-looking photo on the homepage? I just...
Rather than the poor kids?
Yeah, I don't know. I just wondered if like...
I thought of the good, smart, elegant, that's sticking there, but I'm not going to say it. I was going to use Chuck's picture in there, you know?
You know me, I'm all about aesthetic, but...
Yeah, no, I agree.
Or even like a colored banner behind that seal would look good, but I don't know. Just something about the children don't ring governmental to me. I don't...
Yeah, we're actually working on finding a good image to replace that at the moment because that's been brought up a couple times, and I also agree. This is more, this is the first one that we put up there as a kind of a placeholder until we found something better.
Awesome.
I thought it looked like a youthful commissioner's court.
If there were a few more kids, I'd think it was just a family.
Maybe that's how, that's how maybe they saw us.
Okay.
It's merely child's play.
Do we have any more discussion? Hearing none, we will consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 26. Number four is proclamation 20-034 declaring October 4th through the 10th, 2020 as National 4-H Week.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will first read the proclamation, then I'll give all y'all the opportunity to come up and speak. Whereas Brazos County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the 4-H Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 113 years of providing experience-based education for youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develops life skills, and forms attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to 19, hail from diverse ethnic socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas this program undoubtedly could not have been achieved the success that it has already today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and to instill values that were made of our, that made our state strong and great. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brazos County Commissioners Court hereby designates October 4th through 10th, 2020 as National 4-H Week in Texas and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women that have made the program strong and a success.
Thank you.
Avery.
Thank you so much.
One more.
I just wanted to thank everybody for all of your support for our program. Of course, this past year and this future year coming up is going to look a lot different. We have some amazing kiddos, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and we hope to see you guys around this year. So thank you again.
Hi, I'm Becca Catlin. This is my going on eighth year in 4-H. I'm a sophomore at Rutter High School and I'm 15. This year, I'm the Health and Safety Officer for the County Council, and some projects I do is, my main project is food nutrition, and I'm a food nutrition ambassador for the county. So I go around and I teach all the kids in the county about the food nutrition project.
My name is Taylor Colvin. I am the current historian for the Brazos 4-H Council. This is my eighth year in 4-H. I am a sophomore at Rutter High School. Some of my main projects include being a Texas livestock, Texas youth livestock ambassador. I show market bearers and breeding guilds. I do livestock judging and public speaking and educational presentations. Thank you.
Howdy. My name is Summer Halbert. I'm the current reporter for the Brazos County Council. I'm 15, and I, some of my projects in 4-H include gardening and horticulture, leadership, poultry, and vet science. I'm a Texas 4-H Youth Livestock Ambassador and Water Ambassador, and I am pleased with the opportunity to serve my county.
What school do you go to?
I'm home schooled.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zachary Smith. This is my seventh year in 4-H. I'm a freshman at College Station High School. Some of my projects are sheep, poultry, food nutrition, vet science, archery, and photography. I'm a food nutrition ambassador, and I'm about to become a photography ambassador.
My name is Miranda Skacks. I, this is my eighth year in 4-H. I'm a member of the St. Joseph's 4-H Club, and I attend Rutter High School where I'm a sophomore, and some of my projects include being a Texas youth livestock ambassador. I exhibit Simbra heifers, market steers, and market bearers, and I participate in livestock skillathon and livestock judging.
My name is Kyler Went. I am from the St. Joseph, the Southwood 4-H Club. It's my seventh year in 4-H, and I'm a freshman at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Some of my projects include sheep, goats, cattle, and rabbits, and I am heavily involved in livestock judging.
Hi, my name is Peyton Smith. I am a junior at College Station High School. I participate in the Southwood and Brazos County Archery Clubs, and I'm going on my eighth, my ninth year in 4-H. My projects include sheep, poultry, photography, food nutrition, fashion and interior design, and archery. I am both a state ambassador for fashion and interior design and photography, and I participate in the food nutrition ambassadorship and fashion ambassadorship here in the county.
Hi, my name's Delana Hold. I'm currently serving as the second vice president for the Brazos County 4-H Council. I am 16 and a junior at College Station High School, or I'm also percussionist in the Mighty Cougar Band. I have been in 4-H since I was five years old, and some of my projects include dog project, rabbit project, food, excuse me, food nutrition and photography, and I'm also a county food nutrition ambassador. Thank you.
Howdy, y'all. My name is Madison Colvin. I am 17 years old, and I am currently a senior at Rutter High School where I'm on the girls' varsity golf team. I am the first vice chairman of Brazos County 4-H Council. I am going on 10 years in 4-H, and this is my fourth year to serve the Commissioner Court at our proclamation. Some of my projects include market and breeding swine, livestock judging, livestock skillathon, public speaking, and educational presentations. I am also a third-year Texas 4-H livestock ambassador.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Caitlin Cottrola. I am this year's Brazos County chairman, and I've been in 4-H for 11 years now, and my main projects are poultry, rabbits, ag product ID, and meat judging, and I'm a senior at College Station High School.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Michaela Cruz. I am currently serving, serving, I'm currently the 4-H program assistant for Brazos County. I have the pleasure of working with Ms. Avery Martin and these amazing, talented kids who are some of the most hard-working kids I've ever met. Very proud of them. But I just wanted to wrap it up and thank each of you all again for supporting us in our community events. So thank you.
Well, I want to thank each one of you. I really can't think of an organization that develops leadership skills like 4-H does, and I appreciate each one of you being involved in it, and I know you'll be successful leaders as life goes on. So thank each one of you. Thank you, Avery, for coming in.
Do you mind if I grab a...
Sure, come on. Do we want to, we probably ought to stand up. If you can get...
Some masks on them.
Oh. Can we fit, can I take your mask off? And keep light on? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all. Keep up the great work.
Great organization, great kids.
And we approve it, correct?
I don't think we both did yet. Oh, we did, okay.
Okay, then we'll move on to number five, Resolution 20-017, approving the budget of Brazos County Emergency Communications District.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six, approval of following job descriptions.
Move approval A through W?
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A through W, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven, acceptance of donated and unclaimed property left by inmates leaving Brazos County jail.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight, request from facility services to, for a payment authorization to harbor freight for shop area items in the amount of $645.96 purchased order was inadvertently closed.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight, request from facility services to, for a payment authorization to harbor freight for shop area items in the amount of $645.96 purchased order was inadvertently closed.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine, approval of a change, a change the regular meeting time from 10:00 to 9:00 a.m. for October 6, 2020.
Move for approval? Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
Why is it needed?
I think we've got, that bond issue is going to sell, we needed to have the meeting and pass something, I think, before it does it, and so I think that's why we needed to have the meeting at 9:00, so we could get that done.
Move approval?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10, designation of the day of the week for the location of Commissioners Court to convene in regular session each day in FY 2020, and it will be here in this courtroom Tuesdays at 10 o'clock.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11, proposed county holidays for 2021 calendar year. And I don't know, y'all may want to take a look at them. We kind of went through them and tried to do like we've done in the past, you know, try to, you know, make sure that...
Get a couple long weekends.
Yes. Okay, so I got a motion. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded.
Commissioner Perry make the motion?
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12, is workman's compensation renewal questionnaire for CY 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13, is approval of bid 20-114 for temporary employment services recommended award is Staff Link Inc., DBA Link Staffing Services.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14, permission to advertise for bid 21-056 asphalt, oils, and emulsions.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15, approval of election services contract with Texas Voting Systems Inc. for November 3, 2020 general special election.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16, approval of following community support contracts for FY 2021. Arch Councils A and B is Brazos County Emergency Communications District.
Move approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
I just want to thank the BCD, ECD for all they've been doing, the great work that they do every year. It's a real blessing to the county to have them here looking after everybody and coordinating all they coordinate.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17, is approval of contract renewal for Navarro County for juvenile detention pre-adjudication services.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18, is approval of contract renewal with Grimes County for juvenile pre-adjudication detention services.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19, is approval of contract with 14 Partnership LLC for the design of roof repair replacement as a result of storm damage. Funding is provided by TAC with no anticipated cost to the county.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20, is approval of contract 20-009R Lexus Nexus for the District Attorney's Office date of revision to start October 1.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21, is approval of contract 21-013 with IBM for Moss 360 Mobile Management Software.
Move approval?
Second.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22, is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 23, is personnel change of status.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 24, is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 810-2788 through claim number 810-2993, and claims number 9000552 through claim number 9000582.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We will skip down to number 27, is juvenile directors report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 14 juveniles in detention right now. We have nine males, five females. Five juveniles are in medical isolation just for, because they're new, new intakes, and we have 29 youth on electronic monitor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number 28, is sure report on inmate population. Sure.
Judges, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Our jail population is 574. 504 of those are male, 70 are females. We have 34 on electronic monitors, and 18 are pending. We're continuing our streak. We have zero inmates who are positive or quaranting. We do have four staff that are positive and five that are... We do have four staff that are positive, and five that are quarantined, and only the one in the rehab hospital.
Good.
All, all good.
Okay.
All right. So those of you that watch me hobble up here for so long, I'm taking care of that next Tuesday.
All right.
We'll have a new hip, well, I'll probably be under the knife right now. So looking forward to that.
Okay.
Prayers with your, your, those that work at the jail, as well as your surgery, but I just wanted to say, in this environment, it's pretty outstanding. You can have 574 inmates and zero cases, and just great work, great work on your teams behalf.
Our staff's doing a wonderful job.
Yes, they are, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to number 29, is announcement of interest items that possible agenda topics. Hearing none, number 30 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we'll go back up to number 25 and convene it... Come on in, Lane.
Hi, Charles want me to introduce our new purchaser to the court. We have Luisa Lopez, she's one of our new purchasers. She started with us about a week and a half ago.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Nora Yell.
Okay, so we'll move to number 25 and convene in the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. We need all the commissioners, Candy, the attorneys. I think that's all we need in there. And the time is 10:34. You ready, Candy?
Yes.
It's 10:45, we're coming out of executive session. There's no action to be taken, and the next item is to adjourn. Thank you.